We are enlarging our Angular teams. Just an invitation, in case you'd like to have more information about us, just look for me on LinkedIn. We will post on the Meetup event, my link. So, in case you would like to connect and share some views, we are open to meet you and to comment in more details and the projects. Mainly, we are developing different user interfaces in the Pharma sector, which is kind of very important. And those are really quality, high-quality projects, because I mean, I'm studying different analysis and diagnosis. And that's a good point and a good challenge, in case you'd like to take a part in your professional career. Now, if there's one to... Thank you.
So, let's start. Somewhere I read that you should find a reasonable way of starting this kind of events. It should not be one soup at a time. I won't say one soup at a time. I became a front-end developer. Let's say like last year, this room, I was presenting my masterclass to become a senior front-end developer, or senior IT consultant, as we also call ourselves, okay? And somewhere else, and let's say, interesting question, regarding front-end developers. Now that there is a lot of yells, but not always is a pseudo for all developers. And not always developer has enough experience to feed in this kind of yells, okay? Talking of course, a problem, of front-end development. Especially on Angular, it's typical getting this kind of proposal, like, "I need a front-end developer with 20 years' experience on Angular." Yeah, it's like, "Whoa, whoa, come on." Angular has been around for now nine years. AngularJS first, okay? And then, after 2016, we got Angular2. People were a bit disappointed with Angular2, because it was getting almost everything from AngularJS and rewriting to a new framework. So, basically, those who learn AngularJS had the obligation to start learning again, like, in completely new framework, yeah? To start developing, because basically, everything they did before was a completely different thing, okay? So, the question that I got that day here in this room, in this very same room, was how to hire, how to identify, how to get better front-end developers, okay? So, we started working from there, and it was almost a year, okay? So, it was around October, October 2018. Okay, so, we start working and getting ideas, doing things, trying to figure out how to solve the problem that we have. Because as you might know already, I'm not sure if you can explain before, we are an IT consultancy company, okay? So, basically, we solve problems for people or for other companies that require some expertise or knowledge on IT. Okay, so, we started gathering information, going through different experiences and trying to find out how we can develop those frontends, front-end developers, but not just front-end developers. We want something even better. We want something that we call proficient, proficient front-end developers, okay? So, people that knows technology, but also have principles, values, and is capable of interacting with other peoples, not just standing behind their desktop or laptop and coding, and that's it. We want people capable of relating or working in teams, okay? And being able to go ahead with the different challenges that we face in a daily basis in our line of business, okay? So, we define some kind of system, okay? We have this one goal, finding these developers or making somehow these developers. And here, I can see some faces that are more junior with less experience and people that already has plenty of experience on software developer, on front-end development, okay? So, we kind of split our system in two blocks. First, we gather knowledge somehow, and then we will spread that knowledge, okay? So, basically, who we gathered this knowledge? Okay, so, we decided, first, what am I? A front-end developer, right? So, as a front-end developer, I'm capable of learning new things, okay? But only front-end developers can be front-end developers? No. You can also get other developers, people coming from, I don't know, a .NET background. And not only developers. We can even have people coming from other careers or people with completely different experience. A friend of mine, who is here now, he has a professional sportsman background, like, he was a... How is it? He's a water polo player, okay? So, professional water polo player, and at some point in his life, he decided to become a front-end developer, okay? It's a big step in his life, but he's willing to go and do it, okay? So, basically, what we are saying here is that front-end developers, any developers or any people at all, can get this knowledge, can learn, can improve, can gather the amount of knowledge required to become a front-end developer, okay? But also, these same people can share or spread this knowledge among the community. When I put this example, when I bring Leo as an example here, it's because we feel it inside this company, like, we had an obligation with our community, with Barcelona, Spain in general. We have a responsibility with our community to make an influence and take a step forward and improve our community, making this place even better and make people grow with us while we learn and improve in our daily job, okay? So, we, in our system, defined the who. We already know who can do each thing in this system, okay? But then, we had a different problem. How can we do it, okay? Through which format we can do or we can share this knowledge that we are getting, okay? Or how we can learn? Because you don't just, "Okay, I know Angular gets so much love." No, that doesn't work. Get Angular. He told me the other day, "I have a huge problem testing one component." And I was like that. "Okay, no, I'm really busy right now." "Oh, but I can teach you." It would be easier if you just get that knowledge and pass it through, but you can't do that. You cannot throw what you know. You need time for that, you need a format, you need a way to communicate, okay? Communication is really important, and how you communicate is really, really important. So, to meetups, webinars, Code in the Dark, which is an amazing event that I really like, masterclasses or any other type of event, you are capable of learning by yourself, with others, okay? And the same applies to how you can teach, how you can share your knowledge. You get host meetups like this, or I can visit down where you are right now, okay? So, the same applies to who can gather and spread this knowledge and the format where you can do that, okay? And then, then it's where? Where you do it? Where you do these meetups, these webinars? You can do it both in a location, or you can do it online. You can do it basically everywhere. So, there is no specific location to learn something. You can do it anywhere you want, okay? So, after figuring out this system, we decided who is capable of doing this learning process, how we will do it, and where we will do it, which is strictly related to how we do it, okay? And we face a new, different question, like, who is in the center of the system? In this case, of course, it's us. It's the people sitting down at this meeting today. No, because it's people who are learning, okay? And of course, I want to become a front-end developer. Now, I'm ready, I know I can go to events, I want to improve myself, I want to read, I want to code, and I want to be a front-end developer, but... Next problem, how to become a front-end developer, okay? And this is not a simple question. This is not something you just do like matrix and, "I want to be a front-end developer." No, it's here, no. This is a process. This is something that takes time, okay? And something that requires a lot of reading, a lot of patience, a lot of communication, a lot of talking to your colleagues, a lot of going to events, okay? And facing problems every day, because we learn by doing, okay? In Spanish, we say, "The aprendo, I learn," by lumber. You learn to dance by dancing, okay? So, it's the same here. You learn to code by coding. There is no shortcut, there is no easy way to do it. But we can do something our way. We can ease that path. We can figure out the shortest path. Even when we cannot get shortcuts, we can identify, okay? What we want to become and what we need in order to become a front-end developer. But first, question, what is a developer? Maybe someone already said it. There are a couple of definitions. There is no exact definition of what is a developer, okay? But we can define, and I want you help with that, what is a developer and what is front-end? Come on, come on, let's do it. I don't need to talk the entire 40 minutes here. I'm sure you will talk more when the pizzas arrive and the beer is over. Come on, what is a developer? Anyone?
Someone who develops something.
Good one. Yeah, so, there are different definitions, okay? I took two. First one, a person or a thing that develops something. Hopefully, hopefully. I'm a developer and I'm not a thing. I prefer calling myself a person. I'm still a person. So, a person, in this case, we are person, a person that develops something, okay? And what is front-end? Front-end?
It's a person who specializes in...
Front-end?
Yeah.
Not front-end developer, a front-end.
It's the visual part that interacts with the other parts.
Excellent definition. Front-end is, as he said, basically what the user interacts to, what you see in a software, in a program, what you can see and interact to, not only see but interact to, that's front-end, okay? So, by joining these two definitions, we can get to the front-end developer definition, right? You wanna go? Do it, do it, come on.
Now, it would be the developer that specializes in improving the interaction experience and user interfaces to the final user, who will be managing all the application.
Is it clear? Yeah? Yeah? I see. Yeah, good? Different definition for you? Good? Well, we can say from here that a front-end developer is a person, first, and a person that is capable to develop the frontal part of an application, okay? A person who can develop something that is part of a computer system, okay? And a user can interact to this something, okay? So, now that we know what we want to become, okay? What we want to do, we can define what are the technologies that we want to learn, okay? So, front-end developer is someone, is a person, that is doing something, okay? But front-end development, okay? Is a part of the web development, okay? And there are two, three different ways of being a web developer. You can be a front-end developer, or you can be a back-end developer. These are the two main parts. And then, if you are a back-end developer, you can specialize somehow as a devops, okay? Someone that is in between, there is not purely back-end developer, okay? Is someone, as I like to know, as I like to be, that knows a lot of backend, but also knows a lot of system, and also even knows a lot of front-end, okay? So, we are focusing on the front-end part, okay? This is a definition that you can find online in roadmap.sh, okay? It updates every year, and every year, you can get a personal recommendation of the author, which are the yellow ones. And then, the other color, which I don't know the color name, is available options. Which is the color name? The other one. Well, the others that is not yellow are other options, okay? So, basically, here, you will see through a few slides now that you have different options. And then, the author recommends some technologies that you need to learn in order to become a front-end developer, okay? So, we are going to analyze a little bit this part, and then, we will reduce it to what we need to become a front-end developer, focusing in Angular, okay? So, what we need to learn, Angular basically. And today here, we are doing an introduction to this part, okay? So, that's why we are going to... Even if you don't want to become a front-end developer, you want to go with any of the other parts, there are basic stuff that you need to learn, okay? As a developer, as a web developer, you need to learn Git, okay? So, we are social people, like, people that gathers and do things. Even when you are not physically next to each other, you can connect to people anywhere you work today with internet and work today, okay? So, you need to learn Git, because basically, Git is the best version control system to work with other people remotely and work together in the same way, okay? So, it's really, really important. You need to learn Terminal, Common Line Interface, Terminal, depending on your system, you will get different names, like console or, how is it called in Mac? People from Mac. So, you need to learn Terminal, because it's the way that you interact with what is behind your operating system. And this is a common interface in most operating systems. Then, you also need to learn data structures and algorithms. You need to learn some patterns. There, he mentions as a personal recommendation GitHub, which is, it's a web application. It's, GitHub is like a community online, but basically, it's a user interface for Git, okay? So, it's a way of working with Git. In my case, I used to work with a different one. What is the other name of the...
We have Jira.
No, it's the Big Bucket. Big Bucket. I used to work with Big Bucket, and then, I ran out of projects on Big Bucket, so, I moved over my GitHub account, and I'm now working on GitHub again. So, GitHub is important, because it's free. You can create as many projects as you need and share it. And we are talking here about the basic stuff that you need to learn. You need to learn about licenses, because if you do something and you then want to share it with the community, you need to know how you can protect your code, okay? But if you also want to sell it and you want to make it private, you want to take profit by selling your licenses or how people, or control how people interact with your code, this is important. And in most cases, developers are not quite smart in this case, because we just get caught up in the repository and let people get into our code, okay? But this is really important. Then, you get semantic versioning, then you get APIs, HTTP, how to get data when you are calling different APIs online. Then, you get design patterns and character in coding. All of this is really important. All of this, you need to learn. These are the basics, okay? And when I was saying that there is no shortcuts, this is the first step, okay? As they say in the Roma, in the roadmap.sh, the idea of defining this roadmap is not that you are compelled to do something or learn some technology. This is basically a general idea that the author gets by talking to people who are in pools in the community, okay? So, basically, it tells you what is common, what is most used in the community, and is, as he said there, a personal recommendation, avoiding the trendy technologies, okay? So, we get deeper. We already learned the basic stuff. We are good with Git. We are already good doing a lot of algorithms. What do we do now? That's the first step. Second step, you need to learn some basic stuff about web development, like, really getting your hands into the code and start learning stuff. First thing, HTML, okay? So, basically, when we talk about the HTML, this has been here from the beginnings of the web. HTML is the body of what you build, okay? Without this, you have no structure, okay? After HTML, you get CSS. When we talk about HTML and CSS, we can kind of comparison between HTML and CSS and a bride, okay? A bride or a groom. There are girls in the room. When you get a bride, or when you get the bride, you then need the dress for the bride, okay? So, HTML will be the bride, CSS is the dress for the bride, okay? So, more or less, so you get an idea for those that are not web developers. And then, you get basic JavaScript. If HTML is the bride, CSS is the dress, what would be JavaScript? The movement, yeah, it was like, movement interaction is how you give life to whatever you are building there. So, you need to learn HTML, you need to learn CSS, and you need to learn some basic JavaScript. I'm not telling that you have to be like Einstein coding JavaScript, no. You need to learn the basics here. There are a couple of things mentioned here. Like, for example, in HTML, you need to write HTML. There is no other option there. You need to learn some basic search engine optimization, because if you are doing a website, if you are doing a web application, you don't want that to be in your pen drive. You want that to be live on internet, and you want people to find your site, okay? You want people to interact with whatever you are building there, okay? You want to do it cool, you want to do it pretty. You want this to be nice for the users interacting with your website, okay? And then, you want this site to be able to be more dynamic. You want this site to retrieve data from an API. You want to maybe...
Even faster.
Do it faster, yeah, good one. And as a coder, you want to do it better, okay? So, HTML, you have to do what you have to do there, no shortcuts. CSS, there are ways of improving your coding on CSS, okay? JavaScript, there are tons of ways of being better in JavaScript, okay? So, here, they mention ECMAScript 6, which is the standard behind JavaScript, okay? There is a new standard being prepared right now. But the current standard, the current standard is ECMAScript 6, which is the one released on 2015, okay? And it's basically the main reason why Angular decided to migrate from AngularJS to Angular2, okay? To get all of these new features included in ECMAScript 6. And being this, the standard behind JavaScript and the other language that we will see now, which is the default language in Angular, okay? It's really important that you read it, okay? So, you read it and you understand it. So, we learned some basic stuff. We already know how we can start coding, okay? Some stuff. We are starting to get an idea of how to become a front-end developer. What do we learn next? We are capable of creating HTML, we are capable of creating CSS. What do we do next?
Need a sign if you want.
The next step in this part will be learning package managers, okay? So, there is a saying, "We do not reinvent the wheel," okay? So, there is a lot of knowledge in the NPM library or repository. NPM, for those who doesn't know it, is the biggest code repository online. You can get basically anything there related to JavaScript, okay? But you can get mainly anything in that repository, okay? So, you need to learn package managers in order to take advantage of the common knowledge in the world. So, people, if you are facing one problem, basically, someone else already faced that problem, okay? So, by learning, by learning or deciding which package manager you are using, in our case, we use NPM, you will be able to speed up your development, and you will be able also to release your code or whatever you are doing into or contribute to these libraries or repositories, okay? So, you learn some HTML, CSS, JavaScript, you know how to get and release your code. Now, what's next? You need to keep improving. Next step will be learning CSS pre-processors, okay? So, CSS is good. You can do a lot of things with that. You can put colors, give order, give a shape to your HTML, okay? But it's not enough. It's not enough, because it's hard to go, the CSS without... It's hard if you are doing a big application. If you are doing a small application, there is no need to go into a pre-processor, and we will talk about that later, okay? But if you are doing something that is complex, that is big to work, you need to learn SASS, and we will see later why. This is like CSS on steroids. This allows you to do a lot of things that are not possible in pure CSS, okay? And even when you learn SASS, which is the default one, it's really good. Who of you knows SASS already? You know? So, after you learn some SASS, you learn how to improve your CSS code, there is always a good reason to learn other CSS frameworks, okay? Basically, because it allows you to speed up your development and it eases the way you make your application better. It eases the way you make your application beautiful, okay? I was a bit disappointed in two specific points here in this roadmap. First, the CSS frameworks. I'm an Angular developer, okay? But I developed with Angular Material. And here, they only talk about Bootstrap as a fine or choose an option by the author, okay? Last year, 2018, Angular Material was included here, okay? So, later, we will talk about Angular Material, but here is Bootstrap, it's recommended, and Bootstrap is really nice. It has been around for some time now, okay? But JavaScript developers are not quite fans of Bootstrap, because one tiny reason, Bootstrap uses jQuery. For those who doesn't know jQuery, when you learn it, it's like, oof, amazing. After some time, it becomes a little heavy and you stop using jQuery. Because for beginners, it's good. You learn to do things faster. You can do amazing stuff by just typing a few lines of code, but at some point, it becomes useless and really, really heavy on your code, okay? Bootstrap is really trendy in the community. It has been around for some time now. But I prefer, as an Angular developer, using Angular Material. We will talk about Material later, okay? Then some CSS architecture, the most common in the community at this moment is BEM, I think. This is not something that you use purely. This is something that you can merge or combine with other architectures. And it's a good way also of organizing your code, okay? So and you learn. Take a look here. We talked about HTML, okay? And half of the part, we have been talking about CSS, basically. CSS pre-processes, CSS frameworks, CSS architecture, okay? So we define content. We were talking about frontend is what people interact to. Frontend is what people see, okay? That's why it's so important that you learn how to make things good, how to make it look good, okay? And that's why it's so important to learn all of these technologies. So after you learn all of that, which is a lot already, I want you to read here in the middle. You have to pick a framework. And you will say, oh, come on. We have been 10 minutes talking about technology, and now is when you're getting a framework. Yes, we have to learn a lot of stuff to get a framework. Because basically, this framework, what it does is to encapsulate most of those technologies, okay? In order, as we said in the CSS framework, in order to make your job easier, okay? So libraries and frameworks allows you to do things faster and do not spend time on things that are already known that can be copy pasted or reused in a way, okay? So as I said, two points on this roadmap was a kind of disappointment to me. First one, the CSS framework. The second one, the chosen framework by the author, okay? In this case, he went with React. Come on, come on. Now, React is really good, but it's not even a framework. That's a common discussion in the community today, okay? React is a library. For those who doesn't know, it's really good. And my friend Omid is an expert on React. So it's common finding in the community this kind of arguing, like, what do you prefer? You, React, Angular? Any solution you have. So you can go with whatever you need. They used to say that one thing never fits all, okay? So try going to a shoe store and tell the whoever is selling there, I want a pair of shoes. He will say, what is your size? Yes? Whenever you are creating a new project, whenever you are creating a website, webpage, or whatever you are doing, even if it's a small page, first thing that you have to take into account is how big, how complex it's going to be, okay? And after you decide how big or complex it's going to be, you decide which framework, technology you are going to use, okay? So this is really important. Angular is not the favorite one. I can live with that. I really like Angular, and I can understand that people prefer all the technologies, okay? But it's really important that you understand that when you choose React, you are able to choose basically everything. If you want to do testing, you are capable of selecting any type of testing library to do your testing, basically. If you want to do some CSS coding, you are able to choose any CSS framework because React as a library allows you to do that. But when you choose Angular, you are getting Angular detractors call it boilerplate, like a huge boilerplate. Like you get a lot of functionality that you might not see in your life, okay? So if you are just doing one website, maybe you don't require Angular for that development. If you are doing something small, maybe React is good. And that's why React is so popular today. I'm pretty sure that the number of people developing big applications, line of business applications, is quite small compared to the people learning how to code, the people in the universities today, the people that is starting this frontend or web development part, okay? So that's why React is so popular. If you go to Stack Overflow, for example, most of the questions, the numbers there are like three or five times more questions related to React than Angular. And that's because Angular is focusing medium and large applications, okay? So you can pick a framework now, and you are ready to start coding, like in a better shape. It's true that if you try to set up the entire Angular framework by yourself, it would take around a week, okay? So you can think about how many customization it has behind only one line of code that you can do to create a new Angular project, and we will see at the end of the presentation, okay? So pick a framework and let's start coding, okay? So in this case, it's worth mentioning Vue. There is a good friend of mine, Paul, that is not here today, and he's an active member of the frontend community here at N, even when he's no longer in the company. And Paul is like a huge defender of Vue. There you go. React, Angular, and Vue. We will focus to lay a top in Angular, okay? And there is the next step, the next top in our part. You know the basics already. You know some CSS, and you do it in the best way possible. You already picked your framework, okay? So now, this is really important. How would you test your application? It's really, really important whenever you're doing something that is not a small application, whenever you're doing something that needs to last in time, that you test your application. Again, here, technologies related to Angular are not the selected one. As you can see in this part, the trendy technologies, React or Vue. But for Angular, by default, you get Karma and you get Jasmine, okay? So these two technologies combined allows you to test the basics in Angular, okay? And it's really important as developers that you understand that testing is a great part of the development process because if it's important to write code, it's really important that this code has quality. So the quality that you deliver is validated to this testing part, okay? And I know for sure that developers are not friends with the testers. I know for sure that we don't like to test. But this is really important, okay? There are different ways of testing your application. When I talk about Karma and Jasmine, I'm basically talking about unit testing. This is a concept that some of you maybe already know, or I'm sure that already know, maybe others don't. But unit testing is the basics. So if you write a class, if you write a function, if you write a fragment of code, it's important that you test it as a unit, as something unique that can be tested and then tested in different ways, like integration tests or functional tests. There are several test techniques, okay? So we pick the framework. We start developing, and we already tested. It's really good. What do we do? What do we do? We keep learning, okay? So it's long. You have to learn a lot now. I'm sure that maybe if they were for the pizzas, a lot of you will be like, this is not for me. I'm going, okay? So you have to keep learning. That's not long. This is also a brief introduction to the technology, and it's long. And there is a lot to learn after this, okay? But we can make it easy. We can make it easy because we are smart. We can get from that huge part, we can identify what we really need. From the basics, I'm pretty sure that HTML, CSS, and JavaScript, that's required. You cannot do anything without that. Then you pick a package manager, NPM, for example. Then you get some CSS preprocessor. We said SASS. Then we go with Angular Material. I want to include it in my part because it's my decision, okay? I'm an engineer. I'm a developer. I can take these kind of decisions, right? So even when it's not in the list, I can include it there. I can include filters. I can go with prettier, even when the architect of the project argues with us and says, what is that? I don't want to use that. But we can get prettier to make our code more stronger, to make it look better, okay? So, oh, Webpack.
Who knows?
Who knows Webpack? I don't. I've been developing Angular for three years, and I have to say, I'm not good at Webpack. I know nothing about Webpack.
But you don't need it.
Only it, because I don't need it. Because the framework in that huge boilerplate that the React developers are always talking about, is included there. I don't need to learn Webpack. So I won't put it in code. Let's go, next. But it's important, it's really important. Webpack is basically what allows Angular to be what it is. It's behind Angular. You don't see it, but it's there. And it's basically what makes your framework work as it works. Okay, so then, we are using NPM. We can learn some NPM scripts to win our application, to deploy our application, to test it, to link it, okay? So we learn some scripting, and we dive into the framework. We start discovering technologies like Alex.js. Who knows Alex.js?
Programming for the
Good. Have you worked with this?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah? I have to say, Alex.js is going to be in ECMAScript 7. So this is one of the improvements of the new standard. That's how good is this library? Because this is right now a library. This is something that you have to install by hand. And this will be included in the new ECMAScript 6 standard, MX script 7 for you, okay? This allows you to code things simpler and improve how you code inside. This makes your code cleaner by giving you some operators, it's how they call it, and code through events, okay? So in future sessions, we'll be talking about Alex.js, and we will do a lot of code with this. We use it every day, and it's really, really good working with this. And then you get TypeScript. We have been talking about JavaScript, and here, we have to make a stop. TypeScript is the language behind Angular. We were doing a lot of focus on JavaScript because as they define TypeScript, it's JavaScript at the end. Everything you call JavaScript is TypeScript. So you can say you don't require to learn TypeScript to code in Angular. If you know some JavaScript, you are good to go. But again, if you want to do a big application, if you want to do something like robust, big, strong, you have to learn some TypeScript, okay? Then the testing, there is no shortcut there. And last but not least, PWA. Who knows PWA? Progressive advance. Good. So a progressive advance is basically a way of wrapping your application and deploy it as a native application. It's taking advantages of this kind of simulation. At the end, you are using your work application, but you code in a way that is optimal to deploy and run in any device, okay? So by knowing PWA techniques, by knowing how to include this PWA in your application or implement your application as a progressive advance, even when you don't deploy it as a native application, this will look like and be a lot more faster because this allows you to improve your code in a way that you won't be able to see before. And it was mentioned in the part, there is an easy way of checking how good is your application by taking a look into the inspector in Chrome. You get one tool that is called Lighthouse. I totally recommend it. If you're developing something now, go to Lighthouse and run a profile inspection. And you will see how good is your application. This will give you some insights on how good is your application on search engine optimization, how fast does your application run in different network speed. So this is something to take into account. And as I said, even if you're not doing something to deploy like a native application or running as a native application, this is really good to take into account, okay? And this is the short version, but still not enough. Still, we have here a lot of stuff. Let's make it simple, right? And this, I call it, and here a smaller version of the part. So we got the part, long one. We get a short version of the part. And I was thinking about it, and this I discussed with my friend Leo here. What are the basics? Like a lot of words there, a lot of technology. What are the basics? What is what you need to learn? That if you don't learn that, you won't be a good Angular developer. The basics, the basic stuff. And I reduced the list to these six technologies here, okay? So there are three blocks here. There are how to give it a body, okay? How to create some structure. There are things related to how good your application will look like. And there are things related to your code, to how good will be your code. You will code with TypeScript, and you will do your testing with Karma and Jasmine. That's the basics, basic, purely basics of Angular. Without this, there is nothing. But this is something that we can learn. And this is something that we can easily get an idea of what it does and how we can use it and include it in our application. This is something that once you learn it, when you create an application in Angular, your first application, you will be like, hey, this is HTML. I know this, this is CSS. Hey, these are the tests. Oh, this is a test suite in Jasmine, okay? So without this, no, don't go into Angular. But with this, you got it ready. First, HTML. We were talking about HTML before. Hypertext markup language is basically how you write your structure for the components, the web components that you are developing or how you give a structure to that website, okay? So after that, you get CSS. Now it's CSS 3, the standard, okay? It's the latest standard. Basically, this is how you make it look good, okay? So cascade, cascading, style sheet. And this is what you put over that HTML to make it look good. As I said, if you want to make it even better, you will learn some SASS. You can learn less. There is another framework called Less or preprocessor called Less. But SASS is like quite simple. And as I said, CSS on steroids. This allows you to include variables in your CSS. This allows you to do nesting. Then the same way you write HTML, you can write then these style groups with SASS and make it look exactly like your action. It's easier to maintain. It's easier to work with. Then you also get loops. You can split your coding functions. You can import fragments of CSS and do a lot of things that you won't be able to do in purely CSS, okay? So the name is awesome. They are co-developed themselves syntactically awesome style sheets. CSS one was not complex, you know, the name. And after that, we get Angular Material, okay? So we were talking about these three in the part, but I think it's important that we take a moment here. Angular Material is different than Bootstrap in not using jQuery, okay? But it's also different in another way. Angular Material is maintained or based on Material Design, which is the theory or the definitions that Google bring to the world to make better user interfaces and better user experiences, okay? Basically, people in Google decided to standardize how interfaces should look like and how interfaces should be and how interfaces should be interacting between them and with the, uh, with the user. Okay? So, to make you, uh, to give you an idea of what Angular Material is proposing or what Material Design is proposing, we will see a small video. It's a one-minute video. So, you can get an idea of Material design.
Material design is alive. And it lives in a world a lot like ours. A world that's responsive, natural, aware, and intentional. Material design uses responsive animation to create energy. When you take an action, feedback is immediate and it never waits. Motion adapts to the distance an element needs to travel, focusing on how fast something needs to move rather than how long it should take to get there. Motion should feel natural, moving the way things do in the real world. Nothing should instantly start or stop. Elements in motion have momentum and take time to speed up and slow down. They respond to forces like gravity, moving in curved paths instead of straight lines. Material is also aware of the world around it. The way something enters the screen can affect the movement of everything else. Elements can push other elements out of the way or attract them. Above all, materialism, random, using purpose behind every animation. Motion guides you, it keeps you focused on what's important and makes sure you don't get lost. It also tells how something might react even before it's triggered. Whether your brand is fun and playful or serious and straightforward, using the motion principles, material design, you'll be facing a quick, clear piece of experience. You'll know how things move and design to move together.
How good is that? How good is that? Yeah? So, is it enough learning HTML, CSS, and some JavaScript and do something? No. You don't go to the kitchen and open the chair and throw things there. No. You need to mix, uh, everything in the right portion. You need to have taste. You need to do things in a way that is, uh, that people can like it. You just don't throw gold there and do it without any purpose. No. You do things in a way that is good for you but also for others. Okay? So, taking advantage of CSS frameworks is basically that. It's getting what is a standard and is accepted by most of the community. Okay? And apply it to your product. You don't have to invent it again. You can just include one framework, the one, any framework you choose. It can be Bootstrap, it can be Material. I really like Material, I think, a little bit. And then do it. It's true that you can do it by yourself. You can learn the theory and do it by yourself. Again, but that's not enough. You will be spending a lot of time like coding again, something that is, is already there and you can reuse. Okay? So, HTML, CSS, SASS, and then Angular Material. And after that, we get TypeScript. Okay? TypeScript, as it's defined here, is a superset of JavaScript. Okay? It's basically JavaScript, but then you put some types on top of that and you get TypeScript. It's really good. And the importance of TypeScript is that it allows you to, while coding, detect errors in an early stage of the application or whatever you're doing. Okay? It basically prevents to go or run into errors that are like typical on JavaScript development. Okay? And by using some basic features of TypeScript, you will prevent those errors and your application will be even better. And it's compatible with any browser in-house, any operating system. It's something that is a standard right now and it's also open source, even when it's from Microsoft. Yeah? Yeah. Uh, I read news, I, I read some news this week about Richard Stannman, which is the main figure of the open so, of open source community, doing a lecture in, in Microsoft. And there were like a lot of memes online saying like, Richard Stannman was doing a lecture in Microsoft and the world didn't end. Okay? What's next? What's next? We'll get with an iPhone. Okay? So, it's really standard easy to learn. And if you learn some JavaScript, doing the jump to TypeScript is not that complex. Okay? And then, as I said, Karma and Jaspers. This is, uh, totally optional, but I encourage you to learn some JavaScript, some, some testing techniques because this is really important. Our architect is always pushing to do some, some testing. Uh, but, but this is really important. And you will see the results when you do it. If you're involved in a big project, you will see the results and you will see how this pleases the, the client. Okay? These two were combined. Karma is the test runner. It's only used to make your life easier while you run the test, even when it's not the fastest test runner in the world right now. Because yes, it is another test runner. It's really good and it's even faster, like twice faster than Karma. Karma is, I think, one of the only remains from Angular Yes. It's one of the only noise that came from the old, uh, old framework. Okay? And Jaspers is how you write that test, those tests. Okay? So, we, we, we forgot about this. We were talking about Angular, but, but it's Angular. It's online. No, I put it there intentionally. Now, we were talking about some technologies to make an idea, so far so good, right? So, what is Angular? That's our next step. We already know some technology. We are ready to start doing things, but we haven't defined Angular. And as we already learned those technology, we can define it now. We already mentioned that it's based on TypeScript. You code it on TypeScript. It's open source, that's really good. And it's for, uh, creating frontend web applications. Okay? Of course, if you are doing, if you want to be frontend developers, it's nonsense learning some framework that is not from frontend. Okay? So, TypeScript-based, open source, frontend web application platform. And then, and this is really important, it's led by an Angular team inside Google. Okay? So, the company behind, uh, Angular is Google and that's really nice. And then React, React guys, uh, and girls will say, come on. React is, uh, React has a face we can't, okay?
Yeah, but license of, uh, React is not completely free. From what I understood, it's, it's, it's free, but if they like something of the code, I believe they can, they have the rights to, to use it for their own.
Yeah.
And Angular is completely free.
It's free and it's from Google and Google is basically everywhere today. So, and as we mentioned, it's a complete rewrite from the same, uh, from, from Angular Yes. Okay? And next, uh, we know what is Angular. What are the main benefits? I have to say, this is a personal criteria. This, uh, this is taken from my personal experience. It's an opinion and people can have tons of opinions. There are opinions like, uh, like trees in the world. Okay? So, there are four main, uh, key benefits that I, I have observed so far in, uh, developing with Angular. The first one is consistency and it's true that you can work in different grades, rates that are related or not. Again, but by using this technology inside the framework, you will be creating something that is consistent and you can move from one, from one side to another and it will work, usually will work smoothly. Okay? So, consistency is really important. Uh, we have to say that Angular is, uh, built in a modular way, modular way. Okay? So, consistency is the first one. The second one, productivity. Once you start coding, once, once you get some speed on this technology, you will be able to code like a, like you. You will be going for hours and you won't stop. Okay? Because you don't have to stop thinking in, how do I have to find a library or where do I find the library to include to do some internationalization? Or what happens is if now I want to use, I don't know, different routing library? No. Everything is there. And all you have to know is get some, some, uh, knowledge on the scripts in Angular CLI, like interacting and creating component services directives. And then, if you have a clear definition of, of what you have to code, there's nothing to stop you. You'll be coding like really smoothly and this increases your productivity, your productivity. Okay? The next one, we mentioned TypeScript before. Catching errors early, uh, to me, is one of the key benefits of Angular. By using TypeScript, doing testing, this is really important. And again, if you're doing the small projects, maybe you don't feel it. But if you're doing something for a client that requires a big development, that requires time, uh, a lot of time to create this product, catching errors, catching errors early is, uh, one of the, uh, most important benefits of using Angular. Okay? And then, of course, to me, the most important, maintaining. Okay? So, if you're doing something to throw away, it doesn't matter. But if you, if you are developing large applications, line of business applications, something that is really big, being able to bring people into that development and get up to speed with the development in one, two weeks is really important. And you do that by writing clean code, by maintaining your application, by clear and really well structured. Okay? So, consistency, low activity, catching errors early, and maintaining, to me, the key benefits of using Angular. And of course, you can have your own. Okay? So, a lot of theories so far. So, how to set up an Angular project? Uh, if you want, those who have laptops, uh, can go from here and, and code. We will be talking like a little bit about how we can create an Angular project. We will be seeing some, uh, of the technologies working and you and I, I will go there and, I will do it. Okay? So, how to setup? Angular requires, first step, and you can see this in the Angular setup, uh, website. Angular requires Node.js and NPM. You go to the Node.js website to install any of the recommended versions there and you get both, Node.js and NPM. This will allow you to access the NPM repository and install most of the dependencies that you need for Angular. Okay? So, if you don't have it already, you can go to Node.js and install. I recommend using the, the LTS version, okay? But you can get any of the versions there. If you already have it or you don't know if you have it in your laptop, you can run, run in your terminal or console or however it is called in your operating system. Uh, you can run node minus or dash B and you will see which version you already have in your, uh, computer. That's for node and for NPM, NPM minus B, dash B. And you will see also the version. Okay? So, you can install it and then check the, the version. And this is the first step. This is, uh, the first thing you do to prepare your computer in order to create an Angular application. Okay? Good. I have it installed in my computer. Uh, so, next step, how to set up an Angular project? First, you install Node and NPM. And next, you install Angular CLI. Okay? Angular CLI or Angular Quick is a command line interface. It's the command line interface provided by Angular so you can speed up some, uh, tasks or actions while you interact with the, with the framework. Okay? So, the first one that we will see here is how to create an Angular application. Copy paste here. Not good. Okay? So, uh, by installing with NPM, NPM install dash G, that's for global, Angular CLI, you will get, uh, some commands or functions in your, in your, uh, command line interface that will allow you to build, create new projects, link code, uh, test your project. Okay? It will allow you to interact with your Angular application. After you install, uh, Angular CLI, you can create a new application by typing ng new my app. In this case, I choose my app as it's in the documentation. But this is basically the name that you are choosing for your application. So, you create with Angular a new application called my app. Okay? And after that, you can launch your application. I will do it here. So, let me get to the terminal. It might take some time if you do it the first time, but I already have it here, as I said. And I will hide this bad copy paste here and go into one that I already created. I will go into my desktop folder and then into my app, which is the code, the, the, how I code the application that I am. Okay? So, what do you have there? What do I have, why I have there? Too much sun. Soon, you can see it. Okay? But, once you have created your application, how you run it? It's like ng, how is it? How is it? People who knows Angular, how you run an application? Ng serve. Okay? So, commands are really easy and, and quite similar to, to our common language. Okay? So, ng new, new application. Ng build, you build your application. Ng test, you test your application. And if you want to run it, you do ng serve. Okay? There are a couple of flags that you can learn, like dash O, which is open and it will open your application right away. Or you can choose a different port by, uh, typing, uh, double dash ports and defining any open port in your application. Okay? By default, Angular launches in forty-two zero zero. Okay? And there is people there always changing ports, like using any port available. So, uh, eh, eh. I would do ng serve and I will use the flag dash O to open the application right away. And what this does is basically your HTML, CSS, JavaScript, TypeScript, or whatever you have there, you merge it all together and launch your application and you will be able to see finally your first application. This is a basic Angular application. This is, uh, the, what you get when you do the ng new. Okay? Which is basically a title, an icon, and a list down there. Okay? But when you do the ng serve, you are capable of doing changes and this will be watching your changes and reloading the website each time you change any of your application files. Okay? Or most of your application files. Okay? So, that's a good way of, uh, developing. And if you have two screens, it's really good because you are coding in one side[1696.93] And if you have to screens, it's really good because you are coding in one side and then you are seeing how it looks like or, or what is the result in the other side. Okay?
I have a question. We're going to use SASS in this small project or?
Yeah, so I didn't, I didn't create the application from scratch. But when you do the ng new, it allows you to choose which CSS preprocessor you want to use. If you want to use any, you can go with pure CSS or you can go with SASS. You can even change it once you enter the application. Okay, so as I said, the guy who wrote the bug has his personal opinion and I have my own. I really like SASS, so I usually go with SASS even when I'm doing small things. And that's it. So this is Angular. Um, here, let me jump to the presentation. Where is the code? And that's basically how you merge all of those technologies and create your application. Okay, so next steps. I was planning to put here the keep learning slide, but no. Next steps. This is one first introduction or as I call it chapter one for these sessions. Uh, we will keep doing this. As I said at the beginning, we, we were facing this problem in the company, how to, how to find or how to hire or how to develop these developers. Okay, how to find these better developers? And we decided that, yeah, of course, you can find it anywhere, but you can also do your, do your stuff to make it happen. Right, so one of our actions would be continue doing these Angular meetups. Okay, so future topics, go over here, deeper topics and more technical ones would be talking about the Angular core, the router module, schematics, which is an amazing topic. Internationalization to make your applications look like understandable for anyone around the globe. And then of course, you'll be testing Angular Matiia, progressive pull-up, HTTP services, APIs. We will be doing at least one session a month. Okay? And that will be the way that we will facilitate any hiring new developers. And if you're not joining our team, if you're not joining our company, at least you will be becoming a better front-end developer. Okay, so this was supposed to be the last slide. Okay, and I learned also that if you put "NG" in a slide, what people do? I was trying to decide, this one or this?
Both.
This one, huh? Yeah, so. So I hope you enjoyed the introduction to Angular, this talk about the technologies in the framework. And if you have any question, I don't know what time is, what time is it?
Is someone to drink a beer?
What time is that?
Less than 15 minutes for it.
Okay, so we have 15 minutes before pizza and beer and PlayStation.
Paul Melero says that, thank you for your information.
Good friend. And so we have 15 minutes. If you want to, if you want to ask anything, any questions?
When you talk about using Material Design, something that should be decided by UX people or, I mean, how do you get that decision or it should come, how the design should give you the basics of?
In my opinion, in my opinion, it should be used by both. Okay, so UX people should be smart enough to code it, to design in a way that is accessible for everyone. Okay, and that is able to get to different people. Okay, but you as a developer, you should be able to develop what they design. Okay, so basically, it should be used by both. Material Design is something you learn and you can apply it in both the stages of the development process. Designing and recording. Okay?
Alejandro Morales asks that, are we seeing any example where you add all these basic elements? X mails, CSS, in case we don't know, in case if we don't know, how can identify which is each component inside the webpage?
Yeah, we didn't open the application, but we can do it. Like, there are other things like choosing which code editor you're going to use. I like to use this one in presentations because it allows you something as basic as zooming the entire thing. Okay, but if you open your application here, well, once you open your application, I will open a folder here. I will go to my desktop and then I will search for my app. When it hits my app. So you open this folder, which is the root Angular script. And then, I can view. Inside here, you can identify easily by just watching the extension of the files. What is an HTML file, what is a SASS or CSS file? Where are the? You can see here, spec.js are the test suites and then the component classes. Okay?
Hello?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm Alejandro. I have another question regarding this. And all these elements are automatically added when you are just setting up Angular?
Yeah, once, once you create, once you create the project, you get a basic structure. Okay, and then while you do some progress on your coding, you can add new modules, new components, new classes. Okay, and you can do it by using the Angular CLI functions or you can do it, you can do it by hand. At the end, an HTML file is basically including HTML code. Or if you try to write a component class, for example, you can know, you can know, know the basic structure, which is having the imports in the first block. Emma script seeks imports, which basically tells you where are the dependencies, the dependencies on your component, service or directive. Then you get, in this case, it's a component. So you get this metadata, metadata of the component saying which selector you are using, where is the template or the styles for this component. And after that, a third block, which is the class implementation.
Mm-hmm. And another question, sorry, I'm very novel in front-end. That's why I have so many questions. When I look at the code, how can I identify the Angular code and the HTML? Well, for example, the HTML, it's pretty easy. Okay, because it's inside tags. But where can I see the difference between Angular and another JavaScript code?
How can, how can you see if this is an Angular project?
Yes, if, no, it's, if a word, for example, like here, a simple word, it's a Angular keyword or a JavaScript keyword?
Well, here, almost everything is JavaScript unless you are referring to custom selectors. For example, if you write a component, you basically define a selector, which is not pure HTML. Okay, this is something that you will include in your HTML. And what you're doing is extending that HTML's HTML capabilities into a new component. So you need to get used to that and, and start coding. You, at first sight, everything can be the same to you. Okay, but once you start coding, you can identify those elements that are not pure HTML, CSS or, or JavaScript.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Okay? Good?
Excellent. Applying more for this, for his answer. It helps to identify what kind of element you are using. In this case, it's a component and it's implementing the component, component for which will be useful for, for, for people. For React people, the HTML is inside the JSX. Here it's outside, so it's a little bit easier.
Actually, it's a bit more complex than that because you can have in Angular, inside the class, you can have the CSS code and also the HTML. You can have it inline or you can have it in different files around the application. Okay, but then the structure in classes is common, like imports, then decorator, saying what is that class and then the class. And for components, you will usually get four files. The HTML, CSS, the tests and the component class. Then services is a smaller services, you only get test and class and so on.
For every component, you have, you have to have a HTML file?
No, at least you need the component class. Because you can have the, the CSS and the HTML declared inside the decorator. Okay, and then it's optional having the test. Okay, so you at least need one file, which is the component class. So you can have it inline, you can have it outside. Okay? Good?
This is the rest of your thought?
No, this is the one you prefer. No, you can code, you can code this in no bug, you can code it anywhere. Like basically any, not code editor, any text editor will work. Okay, you need only a text editor and a terminal. And this is Visual Studio Code, which is free and is quite common among developers. And I prefer using Webstorm, which is from GitBrain. And people coming from Java probably know it and also people that develops for Android. Because it's, I think I read somewhere that Webstorm is the best integrated development environment to, to web developers. Okay, so the difference is that this is free and the other one, the other one is like 50 euro the license per year or 200, depending on, on the type of license. So, it's up to you. So that's it. So thank you very much and I hope to see you again in one of the next sessions. Okay? Oye, los que no son de la oficina, doblando por aquí, o bueno, que uno de los chicos lo lleve. Doblando por aquí está la cocina, nos vemos ahí.